Good evening, like to call the Inglewood City Council meeting to order. Would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Wimberly is absent, Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilwoman Washington.
Present.
Councilman Shaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Here.
We have six present tonight, we do have a call on.
Okay, before we do our presentations, um, we have their approved agenda.
So, we have some added, um...
We have, okay, I'm sorry, approved agenda with some added on. Under presentation, uh, we're gonna delete the Ring Doorbell app. And we're gonna add the Lower River Rouge Water Trail. And under item D in closed session.
And that's under business, you're gonna item, um, D and E.
Okay, D and E, yeah, in, under the business. Do I have a motion? Consent agenda?
No.
With the, with the correction?
Yeah. Approve all the agenda.
So move.
Have any support?
Support, yes.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, presentation, and before we have a presentation, we have representatives in the office.
Um, Mary McLendon. Good evening to the mayor pro tem, and to all the council persons, and to the clerk, and the CFO, and to all the dignitaries, and to the fine citizens of Inglewood. You all know I'm Mary McLendon from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. And again, I want to say congratulations to each of you in your respective places. I'm looking for great things out of all of you, and it's just a good year, 2020, with 2020 vision. I'm sure you'll have that vision to take you into this new year, and also into this new decade. I just want to remind you of the coffee hours, they have begun already for the commissioner. And the next one will be on February the 10th. And of course, they convene from 12 until 1:00 at the Western Wayne Family Health Center. And, uh, you know where that is, and you're all welcome to attend, the state rep is there, as well as the senator is there as well, so you're all welcome to attend. You can bring information and share information, and to receive information as well. Also, uh, we've, we don't have any snow right now, but you can, um, track the road, uh, conditions by using compass.waincounty.com, that's C-O-M-P-A-S-S.waincounty.com, and you can know before you go. You can know where the roads have been cleared, and that way you won't be hindered, and be able to get to wherever you need to on time. Also, uh, DTE offers bill assistance, just for information for you, and you can contact They will make arrangements for those individuals, especially with special problems such as veterans and senior citizens, and people with certain issues. Uh, this is not a time to have the, the little hot plates going, and the little burners going. Uh, it's just very, very dangerous, and it gets very, very cold, so they should make sure, uh, the residents should make sure that they contact DTE Energy to make some arrangements, so that they can have energy within their homes. And that's all I have for you today, I won't hold you up, I know your meeting is a little bit behind, so I won't talk, 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 but it's a pleasure to see each and every one of you, and again, Happy New Year.
Next to...
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, administration, uh, citizens. Uh, this evening, um, not too much to report right now, we are working on a few pieces of legislation right now regarding the community, uh, policing and safety, uh, Community Safety Policing Act, um, something to bridge the gap between, um, schools starting in elementary, um, and the police departments, so also working on some social equity stuff as it relates to the marijuana and hemp industries, um, trying to make sure that we give folk, um, you know, in the neighborhoods on a local level, a chance to really get into the industry, um, to support them as well, educate them on the process, and give them some startup funding. Few other things as well, uh, also the governor just had the State of the State, uh, where she presented the plans that's going on for the state, um, as we move forward, if there's any ideas or, um, questions you all might have, uh, we can definitely talk about those. Also, as always, there are boards and commissions that are opened up in the state, um, so if anyone, um, wanna counsel, or any citizens would like to participate, um, definitely let us know, we can get a list to you, um, there's boards and commissions for everything, um, so if you are interested in doing, uh, one of those, just let us know. Besides that, I believe that is, is all. Uh, Happy Black History Month, it just started, even though it's year round, but, uh, uh, just, you know, y'all looking good up there. Are there any questions or comments? Councilwoman?
Um, reference to bonds, Governor mentioned. Uh, what is the impact of those on local municipality?
So basically, uh, as far as the road, uh, is related to the roads, the governor tried to work with the, um, actually presented a plan, uh, when she first got in, um, to fix some of the roads. Uh, what happened was the Republicans didn't really come to the table, uh, so now she's basically using her executive authority to, um, do it herself. The only thing wrong with the bonds is that it's really only gonna be for the state trunk lines, uh, so it's gonna be an initial fix to fix some of the roads. The problem now, um, is that us as a legislator are gonna have to come together, um, to figure out what is the long-term plan in terms of some of this, the, the local roads, um, and so, um, her plan is gonna at least get a kick, gonna get, get it started, um, but as far as us fixing some of those local roads that we have, like here in Inglewood, for example, like Harrison, um, we're gonna have to figure out a plan on the state level to figure out what we're gonna do to get funds for that. Um, so basically she had to circumvent the legislature because they weren't coming to the table, and her, her big plan was to, you know, to fix the damn roads, so now she's trying to, um, basically use her authority right now to at least do some of the roads in the state, um, so...
Sorry, but I have a two-part question now.
Okay.
First of all, the insurance isn't not looking all that grand, okay? And the second, there is a group of insurers have voodoo money. Why aren't we using some of that dang road?
So, uh, as far as the auto insurance relates, of course, there's a, a bill that was passed last year, and it was supposed to take effect this July. If you pay attention, rates will actually be going up. That plan for auto insurance, the whole idea was to give people options, um, so you know, you can keep, uh, unlimited coverage, you can go to $500,000 or $250,000. The problem with that is that, um, the benefits would be reduced if you go to a bottom level, and, you know, $250,000, $500,000 sounds like a lot, until you find yourself in a hospital room, or have to, you know, some bills to, uh, happen to come up, so that money goes away very quickly. Um, if it, if anyone's actually thinking you wanna, wanna opt out to any of these different levels, you wanna maintain a limited amount of coverage, if you have auto insurance at all. And so, if you keep the same policy, it should be going up, I think rates actually were going up starting in December, um, even because people are seeing that, you know, people may be able to opt out to these different lower options, and so they actually started raising the insurance premiums, um, right now. There was a bipartisan plan, um, presented last year to reduce rates, um, automatically, but still maintain the same amount of benefits, it was shot down, um, but there's something called the Mackinac Policy Conference that happens every year. Um, last year they signed the insurance bill that they're working on into law right before the Mackinac Policy Conference, um, basically it was, it was for optics, they wanted to make it seem like they're passing some monumental, um, auto insurance reform right before this convention, this conference started, so it could look like Michigan really finally fixed the problem, um, but we didn't. And so, um, rates will still be going up right now, unless you opt out to one of the other coverage levels, and I, I suggest you don't do that, because, um, you don't wanna compromise your benefits, um, just to save a few bucks, um, 'cause the rates still wouldn't be going down drastically. But there are other plans that we're working on right now to, to fix that, 'cause there's a way to guarantee actual rate reductions, and still save the benefits for people. Um, we just need a facelift on the legislature first, um, so hopefully after this election we get, um, some more, um, like-minded folk in office, so we can actually get it done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just, um, I didn't hear too much about the driver's responsibility law.
Yeah, so the, the driver's responsibility law, uh, actually back in 2017, or 2018, I wanna, I wanna say maybe early 2018, we worked on driver's responsibility fees, uh, all that stuff at the, I believe in October 2018 was gonna get, um, completely done away with, that entire, the whole program around driver's responsibility fees, so that's not even, um, right now, the thing that we even need to be concerned about, they, they completely, uh, people up until October 2018, if I have the dates correct, uh, were able to go in and get on the payment plan and pay off the driver's responsibility fees, but after 2018 in October, um, that whole program was completely wiped off.
So you...
Just because of, you know, the way that people were beginning to get, um, it was just a, uh, the program was just bad for folk, they would catch a, a quick little ticket, and then they end up getting all the court fees, some people were getting locked up, and so it kinda became, uh, an economic problem for people, you're putting people, uh, with low finances into jail, basically, 'cause they weren't able to, um, get into the process, so that entire program has been wiped out now. Yeah. All right, thank you.
My next person, I, I'm not sure if she wants to speak now, or comments, uh, residents who have thirty-two hours, would you like to speak? Arthur Sen.
Happy Monday. I am still working with the Complete Count Committee to obtain a complete accurate count in the city of Inglewood. Over the last two weeks, we have had a tremendous amount of success contacting people and finding out what their needs are. What we have found out as a result, in our hands-on hands, uh, mouth-face-to-face efforts, what we found out is that people are willing, many people are willing to fill in the census form. There is a lack of knowledge of how to do it. And the people in certain situations, I figure that there's probably, uh, $22 million in people who just need help. And as a city, it is up to us to help our neighbors help the entire city. Uh, we're looking for volunteers, there'll be a committee put together soon. We had a meeting with, uh, Inglewood Ministerial Alliance last month, and on that date, we found that there were several ministers, one, the church is actually outside of Inglewood, but that has, uh, commuter, um, computer labs that are willing to have people come in and apply for census jobs, or to seek help filling the application when the time arrives. We have met with and talked with Mr. Bollinger in, uh, public housing, who has committed his space, Floyd Simmons, as well as the boardroom for any such events. And I think that we're, we're on, I know that we're on the right track. We have to clear out those who are polarized, get them taken care of. And I've spoken with Councilman Steve Chisholm, and met with Gina Washington in reference to addressing our very young population. Because while the median age in Inglewood is 35 years old, if you separate the 27, um, 27% that cannot, is not old enough to fill out a form, you'll find out that the age is actually a lot higher. Therefore, those of us seniors continue to surge forward, and would, we would appreciate all the 20, 30-year-old help we can get, because that is a population that we don't hip-hop anymore. But we put to, put together plans that include people who are not in our age group, who don't have our history and experience. And I'm asking each member of council to go to there, we just had an election, go to your contact list, and ask everybody that supported you for your office to also support you in empowering our city. And it's, it's the one time that I know of, that every single person counts for the same amount of money. If people were on sale, then you could buy every one of them for $1,800 apiece per year. Questions? Questions?
Deadline for some, uh, to...
Employment? For employment, they haven't said that there is a deadline, but I can tell you, we have another job fair at the complex, starting at 11 o'clock on Thursday. It will end at 2 o'clock, or I should say recess at 2 o'clock, and we decided to carry it on over to 5 o'clock, because there are many people that are not just unemployed, but there are those who are underemployed, and would like to make the extra money. I would suggest, as it was suggested to us in our last meeting, don't apply for part-time, because many people are gonna only get 20 hours anyway. So just apply for a full-time position, do not get too specific, they will decide where they want to place you once you're there. I can also say that as a test, one of the Complete Count Committee members, um, filled in the application, just, just because she was there, that was on Wednesday about 1:00. On Friday, we were at Twin Towers having a luncheon meeting, and the Census Bureau called to make an appointment to come and do fingerprints and move forward for testing. So it's not something that you, there's a lot of jobs, but it's not something that anybody should continue to put off, you need to just do it. Okay, we did, I did, did I say we have, um, Dartmouth Square is one of the areas that has come up, has, under new management, and has expressed an interest in doing whatever we need, um, to have people come in and, uh, fill in applications, to have coffee hours, to talk with residents, or whoever they, of course, want, um, they probably would be mostly Mondays, but they will sponsor those events themselves. Oh, the one thing, one more time, one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
These jobs that the Census Bureau, Bureau are offering now range from $21.50 an hour to $24.50 an hour. While we were at the meeting that, uh, the person was called for a census, another lady popped up and said, "My friend just called me, she got called for one of those jobs to pay 27." So there's no real top that we're aware of, and there's no real end to the application, because when you need 60,000 people, even if you get 60, you don't know how many people are gonna drop off. But we want Inglewood.
All right, thank you. And the presentations, we have a, a presentation, not sure what the person's name is, but the Lower River Rouge Water Trail?
This is Sally Petrella.
Ally? Okay, thank you.
So while he's getting my presentation up, um, I just wanted to thank you so much for inviting, uh, me to be here, to tell you a little bit about Friends of the Rouge, and the Lower Rouge Water Trail that goes right through your community, that has such potential to really connect, um, people to your community. So, um, I don't know if you can get that going there, uh, well, anyhow, it looks like it's coming up. Uh, so I'm Sally Petrella, uh, with Friends of the Rouge, and we're a nonprofit organization that's, um, that's our mission there, um, to, it's our mission to restore, protect, and enhance the Rouge River watershed through stewardship, education, and collaboration. See, oh, good, that's moving forward. So, uh, our focus area is the entire Rouge River watershed, 467 square miles, um, parts, I don't know if this pointer works, oopsie. So includes, uh, part of Oakland County, Wayne County, and then a little bit of Washtenaw County, 127 miles of stream, um, lots of lakes and tributaries, and home to 1.35 million people. So our focus is on the river, but the way that you treat the land has a huge impact on water quality, so we're also focused on the land. Um, so it's our vision, um, of a clean and vibrant Rouge River being the center of our community, and as you're all very familiar, I'm sure, I hope, the Lower Rouge goes right through, uh, the community of Inglewood. So, uh, Friends of the Rouge has five major programs, um, that are all hands-on educational stewardship, uh, programs. So we do an annual cleanup, last year, 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 uh, Inglewood participated as part of Rouge Rescue. Um, we, we do monitoring, we do restoration, and our newest program is recreation. Now that the river's gotten clean enough to start to support, um, recreation, we're really moving along, and we're really excited about that, because as, as a non-governmental organization, it's our role to bring people to the river, to help build support for the cleanup, and what better way to get people connected to the river than to get them out there paddling on it? The Rouge has not always been this way, and some of you may remember, back in the 70s, 80s, Rouge River declared dead, um, public health advisories told people not to touch the river. It was not so long ago as 1985, when a gentleman was picnicking with his family along the river, fell into the river, caught rat fever, and died three days later. We have come so far due to this massive federal, state, and locally funded cleanup that this community has been a part of, and it's, you know, the voices of the community, the voices of the people that have pushed to clean this river up, because it's, it's a wonderful resource that we should be embracing. And the river has come so far, that just last year, uh, we celebrated 50 years of cleanup, it was the 50th anniversary of, um, the 1969 fire on the Rouge River, when the Rouge River was so polluted that the surface of the river caught on fire. So what a way to treat a river, but it really shows how far we've come, that now we're talking about paddling on it. So, you know, this is what we are imagining, this clean river that's a vibrant, um, center for the community. In 2003, we started exploring opportunities, got a little music back there, uh, exploring, canoeing on the Rouge River, and the first place we went to was actually Inglewood, we went in at Wayne Road and, and came out at, uh, Inglewood Road. And, uh, after, we thought it was great, but we explored other areas, and finally came back to the Lower Rouge branch, um, it has the most potential for being developed for paddling, because, actually, because it has this constant source of water from the Yucca Waste Water Treatment Plant, that's actually nice, clean, treated water, but means that you can canoe year-round on this river, as long as there's not too much ice, sometimes there's too much water. So, in, in, um, and in 2012, we did a three-day expedition, um, from Canton all the way to the confluence, 171 log jams, but amazing potential for this river. So in 2012, we started, we, we asked the communities to work together with us to develop this water trail. Um, we started working together with Wayne County and the 10 communities along this trail from Canton all the way to Dearborn, um, and I think it was in 27th that Adriana joined the committee, and Inglewood started working with us, um, and, uh, working on planning this trail. And, uh, in 2019, we asked the communities to sign a memorandum of understanding, um, and, and Inglewood did that, to, to work with us on the trail to make this happen. Water trails, I mean, the, um, it's the recreation, outdoor recreation industry has identified paddling as the outdoor activity that has grown the most in the United States. 22 million people, um, go out there and kayak or canoe, and that's increased by 3 million between 2010, between 2010 and 2014. So it's really growing, and if you look at our sister watershed over at, um, Ann Arbor, here on River Watershed, they have so many people canoeing there, that they, they, the river's full of people, they turn people away, so why not attract them over here to the Rouge, now that it's gotten clean enough to do that? And they also, they did a, a, a study in 2017, and found that the paddling industry brings $50 million into their budget. Half of that, you know, with the paddling industry, and then half of that being like associated businesses, like restaurants and hotels that support people who come to paddle, so it has incredible potential. So, um, in 2018, um, our executive director, Marie, who, who's, who's, who came on a few years ago, she recognized the value of the water trail, and, um, actually realized that to move this water trail forward, we need plans, we need money. So she was able to convince the Herb Family Foundation, which is one of our major funders, uh, to support the trail, and, uh, create a, a strategic plan. So, uh, and those are some photos of some of the public, uh, the open house meetings that we had. In addition to that, SEMCOG came through with a grant to support a safety plan, because if you're gonna put people out on the water, you also need your police and your fire to know what to do, you know, God forbid, there's, there's an emergency out there, they need to be aware of, you know, how to rescue these people. So, um, you might recognize that room from the Dozier Center, we had a safety forum and invited all of the local police and fire to, to talk about water trails, it was a very interesting discussion. So, uh, as of 2019, we now have a fully developed strategic plan, as well as a safety plan, I brought a couple copies, I don't know, uh... So, I didn't know if all of you wanted those, but, um, it's, it's, um, it's pretty detailed, um, so this, uh, so, so the main focus of that plan is looking at this whole water trail, and figuring out where we would put in launches, rest stops, trailheads, um, and this is, uh, so the, the two, I have the two from Inglewood here, so one would be in Inglewood Park, um, which is a Wayne County park, uh, so plans for a developed launch there. Um, and then, as we were working, uh, with you, we learned of your downtown development plan, and even though that Inglewood launch is pretty accessible, pretty close to downtown, what if people are there enjoying your brand-new downtown, going to a concert or something, why not let them arrive by kayak? So we also added a, a kayak kind of rest stop, so you could pull your canoe out and attend events and things like that. Um, so as part of the plan, we've developed a brochure, signage, so there's interpretive signage, there's, um, emergency safety signage, and then also a whole slew of, of signs, um, for, so people can find the launches from the river, from the road, um, see how many miles they are, we're measuring it from the Detroit River. All this work could not be possible without the coordination by Friends of the Rouge, and Friends of the Rouge made the decision to take this on, um, but this kind of work to make it happen doesn't come at no cost, and supporting this water trail actually costs Friends of the Rouge about $100,000 a year, and what that money supports is a full-time watershed planner, which, uh, we're gonna be, he's gonna be coming on at the beginning of March, and it also supports a couple part-time people. We, Friends of the Rouge, we have raised grant funding to support 70% of that money through the Herb Family Foundation, through a grant from the, uh, Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan, through the Ralph Wilson, uh, Legacy Endowment. We also recently, uh, raised funds, um, from the Center for Disease Control through the National Kidney Foundation. So we've raised 70% of that funds, but what, what we want to ask each of the communities is that we still have this funding gap of $30,000. And so, um, you, Adriana has worked with us, you, Inglewood has been a part of this trail, you attend the meetings, you support, um, you allow a meeting space, um, but we're also asking if you can put a little more skin in the game and, um, support it financially, so that we can make this trail sustainable and keep the work moving forward. So we're asking for a small amount of money from each community, and there's 10 communities in the county of Wayne, so if you divided that up 11 ways... So, if you divided that up eleven ways, it's around twenty-seven hundred dollars or between a thousand two, between one and three thousand dollars. And Inkster actually, with the former administration, supported the trail for a thousand dollars. We're, we're also, this year, looking at some additional grants. The National Fish and Wildlife Foundation has asked us to apply, invited us to apply for a grant to deal with some of the wood in the river. Ever seen those big log jams out on the river? You can't canoe if you've got logs in your way. So, funding to do that. We're working with the, we just applied to the Kresge Foundation for funding for trail towns. It's kind of looking at how do you connect the trail to your business area? So, to develop a whole plan for that. And then, even bigger than that, we're looking at a huge grant from the Ralph C. Wilson Foundation. And also, to connect this to some of the land trails, like the Lower Rouge Greenway, like your plan with Michigan Avenue. And then, in addition to the work that we're doing, that we're making happen, other communities are, are also contributing to this trail. The city of Dearborn just received a Michigan Trust Fund grant to put in two launches, two accessible launches, so people who have limitations can get in the river and paddle. One in Ford Field, one in Dearborn Hills Golf Course. Wayne County Parks is putting in a couple of launches in the Vinoy Dorsey area. And then, this is part of a whole bigger effort. I just learned today that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is talking about ripping out the concrete and the concrete channel and naturalizing it. The EPA is working to do sediment remediation around Zog Island. And the EPA has targeted the Rouge as this contaminated area for more projects, and will be funding some more woody debris management. So, it's part of this much bigger picture. And our focus at Friends of the Rouge is on the river, but the river is what connects the communities. And this river trail offers so much potential for you as a community, connect you to other communities, and connect the people to the river. So, I thank you for your time, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and hoping for some financial support. And if there's any quick questions, I've probably gone on too long.
I just have a few. When it comes to after a rain and trying to get back on the canoe, ours sits down. Is the runoff for all the water? A lot of times, the water comes above. How do you?
So, one of the plans for the trail is to develop a monitoring system so people who are thinking about going canoeing can check on the website and say, is it a good day? Is it a good, not, i- is it not a good day to paddle? Because you are absolutely right, this is a very flashy river. You get an inch of rain and you don't want to be out there paddling. It's too deep and too fast. So, we're gonna try to develop a system to, so that people know when it's safe to, to paddle.
Say, you know, we. Project. Happened.
That would be a combination of the communities. So, if your community has the resource to be working on those. And then. So, some of the communities are doing that work themselves, like Dearborn is part of their launches. They're opening up some log jams. So, so us assisting you in getting some outside funding to do that. But then also, like I mentioned, the EPA is working on, is gonna be funding a big project to open up log jams in the stretch from John Daley to the border of Wayne. So, that would include a lot of that work and at least get a lot of those open from the beginning.
All right, and then my last question is, when you guys are out there canoeing from Wayne Road to Inkster Road, you came across all those log jams, did you have to get out, put your canoe over, and get back in?
Yes, yes, you're exactly right. I, I mentioned, we did a canoe expedition from Canton all the way to the Henry Ford Estate. Took us three days. There were a hundred and seventy-one log jams, and we only counted the ones we had to actually get out of the boat that we couldn't just pull over, but.
Is it deep, or you were able to stand up in the water?
There's parts of it, especially around a log jam, it tends to get fairly deep. But yeah, that's, and there's been a lot of work in the city of Wayne to open up the log jams. So, it'll be an ongoing project to do that.
Thank you. Let's have a couple. Now, you, you may mention that Dearborn had a grant that was, is that city-wide, statewide, or county-wide?
That's a Michigan Trust Fund grant, which you, the city of Inkster, Adriana tells me you have an approved recreation master plan, and therefore you are eligible to apply for that.
Building Department?
So, we actually have an active Michigan Natural Resources Passport Grant, which is like the sister grant of the Trust Fund Grant. There's two different types you can get. So, we do apply for those types of grants regularly. It was a grant that the former Parks and Rec Director was managing, and we're getting ready to put that out for, for bid soon. For construction this spring. Over at the Dozier, that particular grant will, will result in improvements for the Dozier outdoors.
Now, with the locker rooms and pavilions, is that something that the city could have? Also, well, I'll let you speak to that. I have another part of that question is, where will we get the news? And that's something that we can start here in the city of Inkster? A business or something like that?
Yeah, I mentioned, if we get the Kresge grant, that would be, part of that would be developing trail towns and looking at potential businesses. We don't, we don't, we have a couple liveries in the area, but they're not really servicing the trail. And as it grows, it would be a fantastic thing for, for a local business, and we would really like to see that happen. And we would work with you. Part of the job responsibilities for the watershed planner, Adam, that will be coming, he will be coming on in March, will be, you know, starting to look at that and work with your community to develop that kind of thing. And also, working with you on your recreation master plan to help you maybe pinpoint projects that you, you could ask for trust fund dollars for.
That's all I meant.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Now, we're at the motion to consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I just also wanted to make sure that the Allen Brothers and Attorney's P L L, P L L C invoice for twenty-three thousand dollars, fifty-nine and forty-nine cents is on the consent agenda as well. I think I put it on there, but there was no dollar amount at the time because I didn't have the amount.
Who's second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, is it possible we could get a list on the attorney for that six thousand dollars? What it includes?
It's in your invoice.
Yeah, I know, but I'd like to know what, oh, the individual things you're saying are included in it.
Okay. You okay? All right, board since commission. Any updates? Do we have any updates in board and commission?
Madam Chair. At our past council meeting, I know the mayor has stated that he would hold off on the planning commission appointments until this next meeting. We've had two vacancies still pending since then, and it kind of put me in a bind chairing that meeting because we almost didn't have a quorum. That was our annual meeting. And it was a very important meeting. Since then, scheduled our regular meeting, but we've had to also schedule a special meeting. And I'm really in dire need of my commissioners. Four people were unable to, we had two vacancies plus two absences, and I wasn't sure if one of the commissioners was gonna make it. We actually had to table a lot of stuff at that meeting just because of different circumstances. I know we have not had any more applicants for the planning commission, and we still have two in the pipeline.
Okay, so those are the mayor's appointees. So, did you let him know that?
I'm sure he's quite aware because.
Okay, so we need to just email, we have Felicia email him tomorrow so he can, we come back to this meeting in two weeks, he will have commissioners for that board.
Okay, just, I, I just wanted to point that out.
I understand, because if we don't have a quorum, you can't conduct business.
Right, and that's like the second highest entity in the city of Inkster under council.
Correct, I understand, okay.
Support.
All those in favor, we have motion on forth, and have supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Any other updates?
Yes, through the chair. We inquired about some people who were supposed to give us some additional information that had already submitted their, their application for board and commission, and we have not received that information yet. I was wondering would it be forthcoming. One was, we were supposed to get some information from Courtney Owens, and I have not seen that. And there were two other applicants that turned in an application, but didn't, it did not include their resume or brief bio. And that's the only way we can determine, you know, those qualifications that we keep talking about we want. Because the application merely, you know, asks generic questions, but the bio and the, or the resume gives us those qualifications that, you know, make you eligible.
So, I'll have to pass that on to mayor, because I haven't gotten any new applications or seen anything.
Well, we can, we can contact the clerk, and the clerk can submit that or send that information. These aren't new, because we got them a while ago. We're just waiting for this information to come from these people so we can go over it before we vote on it.
Okay, so you need Felicia to call them?
I will contact them.
Okay, you'll contact them? Okay, do we have any more updates? Okay, going down to first reading.
Item A on the first reading is counsel to offer a first reading of text amendments TA nineteen dash twenty-five to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for mixed use and special land use per the recommendations of the planning commission. And these are first readings. Item number B is counsel to offer a first reading of text amendment TA eighteen dash twenty-eight to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for social clubs per the recommendations of the planning commission. Yes, those were the first readings.
New business?
Item A under new business is consideration and approval for entering into an I G A agreement with the charter county of Wayne for improvements to the Booker Dozier Recreation Center.
Need support on this? Can I need motion? Discussion?
Yeah, I, I'd like to. Are, are we, through the Recreation Department, doing the planning for this county? And what percentage is the county paying?
So, so the agreement is basically for funding that the county is being providing. So, one hundred percent of those funds will be available for use by the city. And I'm sorry, your, first part of your question, the planning, the city would be handling the process. The funds are, are designed for capital improvements at the recreation. So, following our normal process, assuming that, you know, the project doesn't require any type of architectural, anything like that, we're, we're, we would just be following. I, I don't believe that, that to be the, hey, so, so the, the, hey, the tennis court, I believe you're, you're referring to the M D N R grant. There's currently, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollar project under that, that grant that will be renovating the tennis courts and putting an outdoor track near the, around, nearing around the Dozier Center. That hundred thousand dollar project has seventy-five thousand dollars in, in funding from the state. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar match. I'm not sure if this money can, can even be used for that purpose. We would certainly be bringing that information, counsel. When the project for, for this particular agreement with Wayne County has been determined, as we, it'll be communication with the administration. Identifying exactly what the priority. Oh, we are, and that, that's what Courtney had referenced, that have developed the initial plans. We've been working with a planner, project manager, so to speak. And we're getting prepared to put the item out for bid, that we're ready to start construction of that project.
Item B is consideration and approval authorizing the Director of DPS as a representative of the city to make an application to the Michigan Department of Transportation for necessary annual permit to work within the state trunk line right-of-way on behalf of the city of Inkster. Also consider adopting the attached resolution to be submitted to M DOT as part of the requirement to submit the permit application.
The move, Madam Chair.
It's been moved and supported and discussion. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it.
Item C is consideration and approval for a separation agreement with Buchelli Group for the city of Inkster Building Services to end on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty, subject to the city attorney negotiations.
Just a, a point of order here. David, are we, are we seeking council's action at this point in time? Or are we just submitting it for information, and we'll come back once the agreement has been finalized with the vendor?
I didn't place it on the agenda. I know I was asked to draft a mutual release. I have received communication back from the attorney representing Buchelli. There is some amendments minor to the proposed release, but, you know, I leave it to the administration to decide whether or not this was an action item.
And I, I know, I know there was a desire during the orientation that council wanted to review this. I think it was placed on the agenda in part as follow-up from the last meeting. We wanted to submit this for purposes, not only the release, but to discuss the, the building department as a whole. So, I think the administration at this point is ready to, to table it, and we'll bring it back.
Support.
Motion to table is for, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, item has been tabled till two weeks. Okay, now we're at public.
Item D is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, make you.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who nays, opposed, say nay.
And item E is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, be.
Okay, it's been moved and supported, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, that concludes our agenda for tonight. We are now up under public participation. Okay, and you have three minutes to speak. Sergeant Wall?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members, administration, Inkster family and friends. My name is Sergeant Wall. I supervise the Inkster Ordinance and Animal, Ordinance Enforcement and Animal Control, Control Division. It's my great, great pleasure tonight to announce that our department is expanding on Mayor Wimbley's message, the message that everyone in Inkster matters. We have created a program to broaden this platform to introduce the, to include, excuse me, the pets of the city of Inkster. Inkster Ordinance Enforcement and Animal Control has entered into a partnership with Tail Waggers nineteen ninety. Together, we are spearheading the Inkster Animal Outreach Program. This program has already begun doing great work in our community. To talk more about the program. To talk more about the program, I'd like to introduce from Tail Waggers nineteen ninety, their founder Laura Koschinsky, to my left, Kevin Tuttle, one of her co-partners, Sabrina Davis, who is not here, but also is active in the community, and Inkster's Animal Control Officer, ACO Booton, and I'm gonna let them talk now.
Like I said, my name, I'm the Animal Control Officer for Inkster. My name's Emerson. We started this because we recognize that there's a lot of need for help with our animals out in the city. We want to basically create a bond between us and the pet owners, let them know that there's different options out there to make sure their pets are safe and they have everything they need. I got some flyers that I'll put over there. I'm sure Laura can talk a little bit more, too.
Thank you, and I want to thank everybody here to inviting us to your city and to initiate this program. Tail Waggers has been a name in multiple communities across five counties for thirty years. And what we're known for is hosting a pet food pantry called our Pantry for Paws, which is providing free pet food and supplies to pet owners, maybe that fell on a challenge or something along that line, and then also, more importantly, is vaccinations. We do affordable vaccinations at our clinic. We house a lot of multiple vaccination clinics within cities. And a few years back, Ms. Rutledge and I created a vaccination program that we did here in Inkster, where we allow the residents to come out to an off-site location and for a real discounted price, at least to get that rabies vaccine for as little as like eight to ten dollars each, and then pushing and encouraging and educating them about the importance of Bordatella, the parvovirus, and even a heartworm test, so we stop spreading these diseases, especially distemper and lepto. When we go out on the streets with ACO Booton, it has just been encouraging the last two, three weeks that we've been out there, because number one, they see an ACO truck, they see a vehicle, they know he's doing good things in the community, and now we have people giving us thumbs up, they're waving to us, they're encouraging us, they're telling us, you know what, across the street, I see a dog living under a van, can you go check on it? And here's something, you know, poor thing curled up next to a curb, really emaciated, no food, but living under a, you know, a van that has been parked probably for months. So we're able to get them out, coax them out, get them into safety with the Romulus program that you, you know, are contracted with. We have been up to residents' houses and provided them with food. We do wellness checks, you know, with the ACO. We've even taken puppies back to our office just to vaccinate them, because we know that they're gonna be spreading and carrying maybe parvo, which is rampant in your community, to where we've asked the pet owner if we can take his animals and entrust us with them, take them down to our clinic, we vaccinated them and returned them to them, which was a great thing to do. So it's a great.
I'm sorry, you're three minutes up, but what I will do, I will relay this.
Okay. It's a great program, thank you.
Information is on here?
Yep, we're handing it out.
On number, okay, all right, well, thank you so much. Lewis? Okay, that was the one, okay, I'm sorry, um, Anna? Thomas, Anna Thomas?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council, Inkster residents, good evening again. My name is Monet Thomas. I have been here multiple times regarding the issue of my mother's residence on Gertrude Court. Ms. Regina Lewis that was here earlier lives exactly across the street from my mother, and I know what she was talking about as far as the trees. Those trees that she is speaking of, we have also brought it to you guys' attention, that those trees are falling when the things hit, rain, wind, and it's also falling on my vehicle. So, we need that to be addressed. First and foremost, the reason that I am here is because nobody has gone to Middlebelt Baptist to see if they had started any projects on making the runoff, so the rain doesn't run off into my mother's backyard. As of today, Ms. Washington and Mr. Oden were there at my mother's house this afternoon. They saw the damage inside of her garage. They saw the damage to her backyard. My mother is over seventy years old, I'm sorry. But if my mother can't go in her backyard, I see that you trying to do this, that, and the other for the roads and for everything else, what about your citizens that are here in Inkster that have been here multiple times, asking for help, and nothing's being done? My mother is suffering. Her garage, she cannot go in her garage at all. If I can take my hand and stick it all the way down to my wrist, her foundation is gone. Her garage is going like this. So what makes you think that I'm gonna allow my mother to continue in this squalor that Inkster has basically saying, we don't have a problem? I have the documentation that they sent to them, that they have nine months to take care of this. They have not built anything. I seen them over there today, putting up cameras and putting up barriers so you can't go in the backyard. I have no problem going in the backyard when it regards to my mother. Now, if you wanna, you wanna sit here, you wanna tell these Inkster residents, including myself, that this is what you want to do for your community? I don't see anything being done. I've been here multiple times. Nobody from this council, except for Ms. Washington, Mr. Bevins, and Mr. Oden, have come to my mother's house just to see her backyard. And I know most of you live here in Inkster. So why does she still constantly have to go and look in her backyard, and she can't even enjoy it? I'm sure you can go in your garage right now and park your cars, get your lawnmowers, your snow blowers. She cannot do that. So are you guys gonna come to her house to cut her grass? I don't think so. Are you gonna come and do her snow? I don't think so. I have to do it because I'm her caregiver, and I'm sick and tired of it. I want something done, and I want something done now. Because those residents on Gertrude Court, I see some of you sitting here rolling eyes and things of that nature, but you have not been to her house and seen the damage in her backyard. I'm tired of the residents on Gertrude Court on the far side of that building of Middlebelt Baptist that has nothing done. Well, as of right now, there is a lawsuit pending. I have consulted a lawyer for my mother, and you will get a bill. You will get notification from myself and for her. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and Inkster residents. First of all, I want to, from the Inkster Task Force, thank everyone, especially our fire department for coming through for us and participating with our annual winter blast. We had our fifth annual winter blast on Saturday, January the twenty-sixth, which was awesome. The fire trucks were out, the children had an opportunity to play with the firemen, play games with them, go on the trucks, they just had a great time. And the Inkster Task Force always, as usual, came through and made sure the children had everything they needed as far as food, drink, hats, gloves, scarves, everything that they would need. And all this was done for free through the Inkster Task Force, again, the fifth year. So we want to thank, again, our fire department, our police department, and all the residents who brung out their children to come and support the Inkster Task Force. Also, for Western Wayne Family Health Center, as I come to the council members, just so I can share that we are here for the city of Inkster's residents. We are located in the city of Inkster on twenty-seven hundred Hamlin Boulevard, which is right behind the post office, you know, right around the corner from our new coming library. So we're there for you. We are here for you, for all of your medical and dental and behavioral health and all of those needs. So please, um, come by and utilize us when you can. Also to let you know that the Western Wayne Family Health Center, along with its census, will be having a job fair, because Western Wayne is hiring, just like the census is hiring. It will be on Friday, February the twenty-first, from one o'clock PM to five o'clock PM, and that flyer should be coming out soon. It was just approved for today. Friday, February the twenty-first, from one to five PM at Western Wayne Family Health Center. So if there's anyone who looking for a job, whether that be medical, census, customer service, all of those things, we are hiring, even practitioners, physician assistants, everything, we're hiring, because we just re, um, got a new location on forty-seven hundred Schaefer in Dearborn. And with the Chamber of Commerce, my last thing for tonight, thanks to Chamber of Commerce, we'll be having our twenty-first annual networking mixer Tuesday, March the twenty-fourth, and it will be at our Dozier Center. The tickets are fifty dollars each, and we are hopefully looking to see all of our council members and our friends to come and participate. And if you don't want to come, you can buy a ticket, and we can give it to someone in the business area who would like to attend, who, you know, some of the businesses are crying a little bit, because they don't have money to pay certain things. So if you don't want to come, buy someone a ticket and still support the Inkster Chamber of Commerce. We appreciate you guys, and we do look forward to working with you all. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions? We thank you, and I, Ms. Kim, I thought you was coming to see us with Zumba on Wednesday. Okay, just tell me. Wednesday is Zumba, y'all, six to seven.
Yeah, everybody doing all right? Thanks for letting me come up here again. You know, we have a, a, a program, our Ayes program, they have a mentoring, actually have something going Monday, conference and talking with the children and parents. And, and on Tuesday, they have a, you know, instructive type of operation, helping kids with their reading and other, I would say, issues of information, of history and so forth and all that. And in the process of, you know, working with the kids like that, a lot of times, kids, they like to open up, you know, and try to express some things that might have a problem and all that. But the mentor program is something good, but we need more members to come, and that's on Tuesday at four-thirty at Booker Dozier Red Complex. We want to try to have like a one-on-one for every child that comes there, you know, helping along with their reading or any homework they might have, and we in great need of that. So, I know we all love our children, and if you can, spend some time, and even on Wednesday, you got Boy Scouts also going. And so I just want to say that, that's our Ayes program. You know, I've been running to some of my, I guess you could call them future husbandry people, you know, talking about chicken, raising chickens in the city of Inkster. They've been asking me, that's something a long time ago, we used to raise chickens. I don't know what happened, to do the charter that they voted out once we came, what you call a more modernized city, well, anyway, is, can it be amendment passed in our charter that we can allow us to have chickens again? But, you know, I, I know, wait a minute. I know, I know a good friend, and people say they worried about the roosters crowing early in the morning and waking up everybody, but, you know, but, but the roosters, you can go to a good veterinary and get that vocal cord cut out of a rooster, and won't have to be waking up everybody in the morning, but we need those roosters. But just look into it. I mean, now, look into it. Ann Arbor, who said no? No, we are a city, and we gotta, we allow other things that other people know, but we gotta look at things that's gonna be beneficial. We just can't look at, you know, just say, well, we, we can't have this. Well, I'm not talking about having pigs and hogs and goats and all that, but we at least can have some chickens, you know? And that can even have to take care of some of the bugs and different insects and all that, to balance our things and all that. Just, just look into it. And I'm sorry, it's something I, uh, our citizens, citizens. But we should have it, no doubt about it. Some of them, you know, them old big old garages, people used to have, and all, I know it's time for them to go, used to park their old Cadillac. Some people had Cadillac, so they had to put an offshoot in it and all that. But anyway, that little area where they extended out, you know, little place for the chickens. But anyway, just, just look into it.
Your time is up now.
Right, chickens for Inkster.
Thank you.
I love y'all.
Okay, next person is Harold Beacom, senior?
Has my three minutes started yet, or when is, is that when I start?
Soon as you start speaking.
Okay, hello, my name is Harold Beacom Senior. You start my three minutes now. This is the second time I came to your meeting. It seemed like every time it rained, my basement flooded all the way to the very step. My front yard, it flooded all the way to my front porch. In the backyard, it come like a river coming from Plum Street, coming through my garage, through my garage, down my driveway. And I talked to the business maintenance man, the guy down here, he says, act of God, but it's not act of God. I don't think it's act of God. The last rainfall, basement flooded, you took out my furnace, I water tank, brand new washer, brand new dryer. Everything else in my, in, in my basement is gone, because I tore it up, not a pond or anything like that. But this thing, I bought my house in two thousand fifteen, had four floods down there. It took out two sub pumps, one sub pump. I didn't replace the last sub pump. Before the storm, I didn't replace that sub pump, because one of the, you know, the sub pump itself costs like four hundred dollars. Then you had to have somebody come in there and put it in, you know what I'm saying? It was like, it was like ridiculous. You were saying, my house is directly behind the city hall. I was listening to the carpet, what I was saying, don't let the city hall be flooded. Why is mine flooded? It was like the gods, like, city hall, police station next to it, it had been flooded. You know what I'm saying? We put one-on-one, one-on-one, as of two, don't ask of the four, five, ten. You know, how you paying attention to me, man? You know what I'm saying? I came here last meeting, you know what I'm saying, you cut me off, this time, y'all talking, you know what I'm saying, it's disgusting. Like, what we can, can we do to solve this problem? You know what I'm saying? What I was doing on the wrong side, y'all locked me up, and I'm on the good side, you know what I'm saying, should be able to help me. I pay taxes. I own this house. It's not like a herd, we sitting here and all this stuff. I own it. So like, what can we do? Can we do and get this corrected? You know what I'm saying? Because no reason why, when it rained, we ain't talking about no storm or boats blowing in and out the water, you know what I'm saying? We talking about, this is simple rain, and when it's simple rain, I can't come out my door. I'm a front door nowhere, because the water up to my foot porch, you know what I'm saying? Come on, back door, I better have some glasses on, because the water running down there like it's running up a stream. So, I, I ran this, ran this to the city council, and they smelled, the mayor told me, he was gonna talk to me, since I'm ever, and look at my property and see what's going on, you know?
Has that happened?
Nothing happened.
Nothing has happened?
That's why I come back here.
But Jerome, have you got any work order to go over there and look?
I want Mr. Giff.
You're having, okay.
He gave me a, 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 a red cross paper. The man told me on the phone, soon as I left his office, I called him, you know what I'm saying? They told me I don't have nobody living in my basement. No, I don't have nobody living in my basement.
So your time is up. Okay, so have you spoken to Mayor Wimbley?
Yes, last city council meeting.
Okay, okay, well, we're gonna get this information back to him.
Okay, so I'll see you next year.
Yes, phone number is right here.
Yeah, because they'll talk about it tomorrow.
Okay, the next person is Lawwanda Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good, and yourself?
I'm good, good.
Um, I'm here to ask the city of Inkster for permission to host a march against violence, followed by a peace rally.
Okay, so what you would do is go to the city clerk, and she can give you the information that you need, and what else would you need for that?
I have to look into that.
Okay, she, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on, I'm sorry. Felicia, a city clerk, she handles all of that, so you can make, oh, you can just come into the office tomorrow?
Because I did call, and I was told that I would have to attend this meeting. So just come and speak with you tomorrow?
Yes.
She did call her office in researching the information that she gave us, they wanted to do part of it in the public ways, in the streets.
Oh, in the street?
So I figured that might need a permit and approval from the body. But if that's modified, and it's just going to be sidewalk.
Well, as far as the march.
And then the location of the rally was going to be held on private, on city property, if possible, which would be the Twenty-second District Court, the old court parking lot.
Yeah, you have to see Felicia, thank you for that. What day is this?
I'm looking to do it on June twentieth.
June?
June, yes, June twentieth.
So you have enough time to get all your information together?
Yes, to promote and, yes.
All right. Is it in the morning or evening?
I would like to do this, have this as an afternoon event.
To the chair, to the council, you'd have to present, you would have to see the city clerk, and also have to provide a diagram, layout of it, because if there's any sidewalk or any road, it would have to be closed. And depending on who has jurisdiction, if it's the state, then she would have to go before the state, or she would have to come before me.
So you just have to get your information of what you need, or what you want, and have it all together before you see the clerk, then she can direct you on which way you need to go.
Okay, so just pretty much write out exactly my plan and what I intend to do.
And which street you're going to be on, whatever, so that way she can direct you on whether to go to Jerome, or whether to go to the state.
Okay, would there be an appropriate time for me to call you tomorrow, to set up an appointment to see you?
You can call me in the morning, or you can just stop by, I'm there all day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Shirley Hankes.
Good evening again, council and mayor pro tem. I just want to remind you guys that the Park and Rec Commissioners, we would like to be included in any projects that's going to be done, because we know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. So when you decide on what is going to be, which you're going to be funding, please let us know, because we'd like to attend that meeting, and we meet the second Thursday of every month at six o'clock at the Dozier, okay? But we would like to be included, because we know the condition of the building, so we want to make sure that we're included in on that too, okay?
And as we said, we know that not enough funding to go around, so we want to make sure everybody tries to express their priorities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Will Miller?
Parks and Rec, Park and Rec Commissioners. She said I said R and P.
Tell them what D and R means, so they'll know what grants and how they apply, she understand what D and R means.
Department of Natural Resources, the State Department of Natural Resources, I'm not sure what.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Okay, Will Miller?
Good evening, pro tem. Good evening, commissioners. Everybody, my name is Will Miller. I'm up here today just for a quick reminder of the upcoming border review for the month of March. This particular border review is the time of the year where we have the power to actually do property assessment challenges and review those for the community. We also, is like the other ones, we also have the ability to deal with poverty exemptions and disabled veterans exemptions and a slew of other things. Last year, we've, the city of Inglewood foreclosed about fifty-five houses last year. We had about fifteen people show up to the border review. All fifty-five of those people should have been there. So we want to make sure that everybody comes out, gets a chance to look and see if their property has been assessed properly, properly, by now you've heard about what's going on in the city of Detroit, what they've gone through. We want to make sure that we're not dealing with any, we'll give everybody a fair opportunity to feel that they've been heard with regard to their property assessment. So we want everybody to come out. Just on a personal note, I also sit as president of National Action Network for Western Wayne County. National Christians in Action was remarkably kind to me, they presented me with an award for their twenty-twenty humanitarian award, it's a group of folks who I respect that sits on that board, is chaired by Reverend Williams, and I was really appreciative of that, that was really nice of those to recognize me for that. So I just wanted to say thank you publicly to that organization for the work, for their work. Other than that, please come to the board, it's in March, it should be the second Monday of the month, so that should be like ninth, tenth, eleventh.
Monday, March ninth, Monday, March sixteenth, and Tuesday, March seventeenth are the dates.
They moving it around like that, district?
Yeah.
What?
We'll talk about that later, I'm not sure why. But it is Monday, Monday, March ninth, nine-thirty to four-thirty. Monday, March sixteenth, three to nine, that'll be the evening hours available on March sixteenth, and Tuesday, March seventeenth, nine-thirty to four-thirty.
All right. Okay, I'll wait for that conversation. All right, I appreciate it.
I have a question for you. Will they be able to tell the residents whether or not their properties was assessed higher or lower? Will they be able?
When they, they'll put out the form at the beginning of the year, every year, they tell everybody what the assessment was, it comes in the mail, and that assessment form will let you know if you were, if your assessment was raised or lowered from the work that the assessor did.
Okay, but what's going on in the city of Detroit, or what they did? I mean, is that going on in Inglewood, or Wayne County?
I want to say no.
No, no.
I want to say no. Yeah, the city of Detroit has some, they had some legal issues with how they address their, their property exemptions. So theirs is, yeah, very much tied up in court.
Okay, I just want to ask because it's Wayne County, we all in Wayne County, that's why I asked.
Yeah, it's each individual assessor, you know, each community, so.
Yes.
Say that again?
Okay.
Yeah, well, okay.
We have, someone else have a question?
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, this is that information that comes out, says this is not a bill, right?
Yes.
Okay, have you ever known them not to be higher each year?
Yes, when, yeah, when the whole world slid into the real estate depression through two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand seven.
That was special circumstances, because things go up every year.
Generally.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we're moving on to city clerk.
I just want to let residents know that we're coming up for our March tenth primary presidential election, and if you are an absentee voter, I want to tell you that there are some changes to the envelope. Your envelope is now blue and white, that your ballot will come in, do not throw this away, it's not junk mail, and then this is your return envelope, it is now green and white. So this is the return envelope, and you will now sign on the back as opposed to the front of the envelope. And so I did a PSA on this information today that will be on our website, but I just wanted to let everybody know that these are some changes that will be made, and the envelope is much smaller, so you might think this is junk mail, but it's not, this is your ballot comment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, now, is there, what else is going to be on the ballot this year, March tenth, is a bond issue?
There's an Art Institute, the DIA, yeah, ballot proposal.
Westwood doesn't have anything?
No.
That's all I have.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, pro tem. I just want to remind everyone, the due date for tax bills, the winter taxes, will be coming up in a couple weeks. The actual due date is February the fifteenth, which I believe is a Saturday, the day after Valentine's Day, so don't spend all your money on your Valentine's, save some of that for, you know, time and the thought is what matters, right? But the deadline is a weekend, so we'll be accepting the payments on that Monday, the Monday following, which will be the seventeenth. So that's the date to pay to avoid any type of interest and penalties. Again, that'll be, the due date is February fifteenth, we'll be allowing payments to be made current up until Monday, the seventeenth of February. And we can continue taking payments for summer and winter taxes, those deadlines are for winter taxes, but we can continue taking payments through the end of February. After following that, then the taxes will be considered the link when you have to make payments at Wayne County Treasurer's Office. So I just want to remind everyone of those dates, if you pay here at City Hall, you can mail it in, or use the Dropbox. Thank you.
I have a question for you. Would the office be open that Saturday?
No, it will not be, that's why, that's why we're allowing payments on that Monday.
Okay.
Due to the due date following on a weekend.
All right, thank you. We are at mayor and council communications, so Regina?
Hi, the city of Inglewood. I want to say happy Black History Month to everybody. Gabe Henderson, I think he forgot to mention, the Middle Park Manor Black History Celebration that we'll be having, this Booker T. Dozier at twenty-twenty-five Middle Building, Inglewood Road, February the twenty-second, five to eight P M. You can see Mr. Henderson for the tickets, they're ten dollars, or you can give him a call at seven-three-four, seven-two-nine, five-three-three-nine. Also, the Michigan Secretary of State is hiring, just wanted to remind you guys of that. There's thirteen randomly selected people that will be picked out of a pool of applicants for Republican, or Democrat, or Independent. This is to serve on the redistricting commission, where you will be receiving a compensation of forty thousand dollars a year. By November the first, twenty-twenty-one, the commission must adopt finalized and fair election district maps, which will become law on December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. So if you want to find that information, you can go on the Secretary of State website, and that is all. It's not my birthday. No, my birthday is in June. Oh, no, that was, yeah, people thought it was actually my birthday, it was not, so, yes, my birthday's in June. And also to Ms. Thomas, the Thomas family, I did, after I left you guys' house, I ended up going to see Jerome Davis, so I will follow up with you right after this meeting, so we can go over what we have spoke about. Thank you.
Mr. Chisler?
Just wanted to keep everyone informed as we move forward and seeking to keep the community engaged. Planning Commission meetings are every second and fourth Tuesday at six-thirty P M. They take place right here in council chambers, unless the meeting is council, they're moved because of the holiday. Next Planning Commission meeting will be February tenth, at six-thirty P M, I'm sorry, I said the wrong day. They are every second and fourth Monday, not Tuesday. Y'all gonna have DDA mad at me. Second and fourth Mondays of the month, and I think Adriana was kind of looking at me too, like, Steve. So I just want to invite you all out, get engaged, see what's going on on that level, because a lot of times, when things come before the council for us to vote on, you have with some of these things, like, one, two, three or four times to speak to them before council actually votes on it, because we have the opportunity at the Planning Commission, if it's public hearing, before we vote, then when we get here in orientation, you have the opportunity to speak, and then if it's another public hearing or something before we actually vote, other than that, once it's time to vote, it's time to vote. So I just want to get you all engaged and ask that you come out. Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke once again. There is no meeting on the tenth, it's going to be February eighteenth at six-thirty P M instead of the tenth. Scratch that, because if you show up and be mad at me, I'm sorry. Please, February the eighteenth, six-thirty P M, and this is a special meeting, so we can kind of help one of the applicants move along, because they've been, you know, held up, stuck in limbo. Thank you.
All right, Sandra?
I have nothing, Madam Pro Tem.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Shaw?
I just have one thing, I wanted to request from the administration, I know we talked about the N S P dollars, and I noticed it wasn't in the budgetary line item how we used to do, so I would want from the administration, the process of what they receive, program, and the likes. So I just want to request that from the administration at this time.
And just so we're clear, you're speaking of the city's foreclosure neighborhood stabilization program? Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, Madam Chair, we used to get that in a line item in the budget, and it was aimed neighborhood stabilization program. It'd been a while ago, so I just want to know how that program is going, just information on the program, because we talked earlier about the grant, have you?
Mrs. Crutchell, did you have a comment?
The program that you're referring to, councilman, is no longer with the city, the N S P program that you're referring to is sponsored by HUD, of which homes were demolished and the residents next door to those vacant land. Were offered to purchase that. Our current N S P program is our neighborhood stabilization program, which is self-funded. However, those figures can be given to you.
That's why I probably didn't know.
And there is F R O R, so first write a refusal.
So if you can give me some information concerning that?
Several things, Madam. One, I'd like to bring up, I don't know, maybe you want to speak on this, what's supposed to be setting up immediately, housing, housing commission. Did talk with the mayor, and that's supposed to be taken. I would like to thank State Senator, I can't hear you, let me get this back close to you. I would like to thank State Senator Eddie Alexander, reaching out on the matters that we have here in Inglewood Housing. I would hope that that meeting would take place, should have been in to place, I don't know what the holdup is. We need to have conversation for March, March I will be in Washington, D.C., okay? Enough is enough, okay? A lot of people saying, why this, why that, a lot of things, people just don't have to live in this, okay? Did talk with the mayor, mayor say that he'll be holding the House trying to find out exactly when this meeting is going to take place, okay? Three, we had two families over there that got burnt out, that Sunday morning. And I asked the fire chief once to report, to put together, to notify me of wanting to know exactly the cause, because it's been allegations over in Lamon Garden areas, that it's been several times that people have leaking gas, okay? On the outside, around the outside and various things, okay? I did not get this report. However, I'm going to request once again tonight on record, get a copy of that, because I think somehow we need to talk with Michigan, talk with DTE about the gas, and talk to housing also about the gas. It is something seriously wrong over there, that people can wake up each and every day and smell gas. Now, these people who got burnt out, particularly this whole fire, that you can tell it came from the bottom up, that they had to make leaps out of windows. I would like to thank Ms. Moore, and team ladies that got together and came to the rescue. I'd like to thank Rick Cross, I'd like to thank Paul, and a couple days, did get them into another unit, that was able to take these people, put them up in hotels, where we can try to make them. um, and team ladies that got together and, and came to the rescue. I'd like to thank Rick Cross, I'd like to thank, um, Paul and a couple days, did get them into another unit, that was able to take these people, put them up in hotels, where we can try to, make them everything comfortable for them. I'd like to thank Ven- thank Vincent DePaul, who stepped up to the plate. I'll hold it right there, but I, I would like, um, to say that in that area, that's my district, that's the heaviest district that I have over in there that's got to be counted in the census. That we gonna have to make some serious moves over in there to make that what it should be. Number one best district in the city of Exeter. And it can happen. Okay, laugh now, I'll get the last laugh. Okay, and so I wanted to bring that forward, so obviously, State Senator Eddie Jean Alexander, who reached up to HUD, State HUD and various things like that. I, uh, I guess you, you, you wanted assistance, can you take it back to it that I'm, I'm grateful the time is, and I hope that she could also, uh, when we get ready to go talk to our Congress people and HUD about the actions that we're coming forward. But I would like to have that meeting, Madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, with, I would like to have that meeting with the Commissioners, because some things that need to be brought forward. And one thing about it is, I think if we can get on one accord, we can make a difference. Thank you.
Okay, um, we can try to have a meeting on February the 10th, cause there's no planning commission meeting, so we can have it here. Talk to the mayor, and we can try to have it here. Okay, and then she can get back with you tomorrow, and then she can post it. Okay, as far as the gas is smelling? I'm, I'm hoping the residents, if you smell gas that strong, the first thing to do is call the police or fight.
Well, they, they, they have, they reach out, they reach out to Michigan.
That's strong? Cause if it's that strong, they should be calling all the time, okay? And do we respond?
I don't know if they called the police, but I know they've been, uh, Michigan, DTE been called several times out there. Matter of fact, matter of fact, the, the, the night, I mean, that morning before it blew, they was out there doing something out there then.
Right, but if this is strong gas smell, they should call the fire department and the police department, and they can get somebody out there. And then they would take it from there.
But we get too small, we'll make sure we get all the people with them over there first.
I don't have anything at this time, so, are you finished? I don't have anything at this time, so, are you finished?
Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, good night.